The recording of the meeting has started and it's 7:15, so I will call the meeting to order here and get started. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. This is the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021. As we are all aware, since we are in the Zoom meeting, this is by remote participation only. I have a short introduction, and then we will get started on our agenda. We do have a fairly full agenda this evening, including a number of different items to address, as well as some articles which will be put forward toward town meeting. But pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing a strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place, this meeting of the Town of Norton's Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for participation by members of the public and our parties with a right requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Town of Norton's website. To join this meeting, you can join online via the Zoom link posted in the agenda, or if you are using the Zoom app, meeting ID 6389291060. There is also a dial-in number posted on the agenda for this meeting. This meeting can also be viewed on Norton Cable Access or the next day on the Norton Media Center's YouTube page. Again, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In addition, please feel free to email questions to the board ahead of the meeting or during the meeting to Paul D. Giuseppe, the Town Planner. His email address is on the Town of Norton's website. Additionally, meeting materials are available on the Planning Board's website. Again, every effort is being made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we'll post on the Town of Norton's website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other record of the proceedings as soon as possible thereafter. I will just add that we are in an online meeting here. We've all had probably more experience in the last 12 months of that than we might have expected. But I would just ask that if you want to speak, please do what you can to pipe up in the chat to myself or Town Planner via the chat function. Please do not use the chat function for personal comments, positive or negative. Those are not being recorded into the minutes as a matter of record, but if they get to the point where they become too much to ignore, comments made in the Zoom chat may be included in the minutes of this meeting. So let's everybody keep it civil, and we'll get along just fine. So now that I have wasted a whole bunch of oxygen running through all of that, we'll get started on our agenda here. For Planning Board business and policy, I don't think we have anything for that. We do have two sets of meeting minutes in the Dropbox folder here. I would ask the members of the board if they have any comments on those meeting minutes. We have the two sets of minutes we have are from February 23rd and March the 9th, so our previous two meetings. We will start with the meeting minutes which are older, which is February the 23rd. Are there any comments from members of the board regarding those minutes?
Mr. Seagull?
Yes, Orin?
Second page, it says they will also discuss the need for conditions for the site plan. I believe we talked about conditions for the special permit. Set aside other conditions, the question came up as whether the special permit should have it, I believe?
At the very top of the page?
Yeah.
Yes, that is correct. We did have them on the site plan, but we've made the decision to include the full set of conditions of both documents. So yes, if we could make that change and get those minutes revised. Are there any additional comments on the meeting minutes for February the 23rd?
Motion to approve the minutes as noted.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion.
Second.
Thank you, Steve, for the second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. I will start with the board members as they appear on my screen, which is in a very weird order. Kevin?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Joe, have you been able to log back on?
No, I'm on the phone, so I'm working on it, but in terms of the question, yes, I'm a minute.
Okay, and I will vote yes. So the meeting minutes of February 23rd are approved with the one change noted previously. The other set of minutes we have is from our March 9th meeting, two weeks ago. Are there any comments from members of the board regarding those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
You beat me to it, second.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion, and Steve for the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Kevin?
Yes.
Everybody's all out of order again. Joe? Joe, for the minutes of the 9th?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. And that is everybody. Okay. So approval of minutes. The next item on our agenda is future meeting dates. Paul, how far out do we have those scheduled at this point?
We are through April.
Through April? Okay.
Yes.
Given that we have two positions which are becoming vacant as of the April 10th election, I'm hesitant to go too far out. But I think it may make sense just to pencil in dates for May, if that makes sense to everybody else. And then once we have at least a little bit more definition on what the makeup of the board will be after that, I think maybe that makes sense. So our meetings in April are the 6th and, I'm assuming, the 27th, Paul? Because we wouldn't have done it during Patriots Day week?
Correct.
And Memorial Day, I know, is the 31st of May. So I would suggest that we set meeting dates for the 11th and the 25th of May. Does that work for everybody at this point? Knowing that we're all planning our weeks and days, it seems like the next day. If that makes sense for everybody to pencil in at this point, understanding that we may adjust it as we go forward, I think that makes sense to me. I don't think we need to motion that, so... Paul, I think we can pencil in the 11th and the 25th of May?
Correct.
And that'll give us a little bit of runway for any applications that do come in to plan when they would be heard. Does that accomplish what you think we need to at this stage, and we can adjust in a few weeks?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. Sounds good. Moving right along, the next item on our agenda is an A&R announcement for Zero Harvey Street. Do we know if we have anybody from this application on the meeting, Paul?
I see the applicant, Mr. Hinton.
Okay.
Hi.
Mr. Hinton, if you would like to just give a quick overview of what you're looking to do, all of us do have the site plan in an online folder. If you would like to share your screen, you should have the ability to do so.
The three lots, the property's owned by the LaRues. Mrs. LaRue, she's 89 almost, and she wants to build a house there with her two grandchildren, and the other two lots. Basically, that's what it's going to be. She's going to build hers this summer. Her granddaughter's going to build the middle lot, and her grandson will build the one on the corner. Yep, John Scott and... So that's just basically it. I mean, the engineer, Joe Webby, did all the planning of it, laying it out. And he thought it was correct to Norton's standards or regulations, I should say.
Okay. Yeah, I see all the frontages are listed and the shape factors are listed.
Chair, would you like me to share that?
Sure, if you would like. Yeah. Thank you, Paul. Yeah, I guess, do any members of the board have any specific questions about this A&R plan? I do see our standard note that our endorsement does not necessarily determine that it does meet with zoning requirements. Unless there are questions from members of the board or anyone else that's on the meeting, I would look for a motion to endorse the application.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. I will go to the numbers for our vote. Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the A&R is endorsed. That will be signed. Mr. Hinton, just so you're aware, during the pandemic, the board has approved a single signer for the Mylar copies, which is myself, the board chair, so when you get a document back with only one signature on it, that is not a problem.
Okay.
It's all been run through the registry and everything else, so...
Thank you.
And Steve, I'll coordinate with you and Joe to get that all arranged.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Very well.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda, so we have a quick introduction, is the issuance of a floodplain special permit pursuant to a land court's separate and final judgment. Again, this is the Nexon Energy Fairland Farm Solar Project. This is a result of an appeal filed by the applicant in Land Court, and the court has issued an order for the Planning Board as the permitting authority to issue this special permit for the floodplain permit only. We can look to Town Council, who is on the call, to provide additional details if we feel we need to. This is a court order to the board. The butters to the project have also served notice that they plan to appeal the decision, and our issuance of this permit will allow them to appeal all the issues in the decision at once. So do any members of the board have any specific questions to Town Council about this agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, this is Scott speaking. As in a butter, I will be recusing myself from this agenda item.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Town Council from other members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, this is Orin Seagull. Just to clarify, at this point, we're just approving that decision without conditions, and we're relying on the conditions on our site plan.
That is my determination, yes. Amy, I'm not sure if you want to add anything additional to that, but my understanding is that the conditions on the site plan decision are obviously still part of this, and this is just the floodplain special permit, which the court decided should be only narrowed in scope to what specifically referenced that bylaw, correct?
Correct. It's 175, 13.4C, and the applicant has satisfied subsection 2. So yes, this floodplain special permit will be issued. The court has vacated the denial of that special permit. But no, so going to Mr. Seagull's question, the site plan permit is still in litigation. So those conditions are still valid as of right now, and Nexon did not appeal all of the conditions of the site plan. So there's only certain conditions that were appealed. So that's where we are right now.
Okay. Are there any other members of the board who have additional questions for Town Council or Orin, if you do have anything further?
No, that's okay, thanks.
Okay. If there's nothing further, I would look for a motion from a member of the board pursuant to this matter. Again, this isn't a public hearing. I know there are a number of people who are butters to this project on the call, but I think you've kind of heard the summary of what we're doing at this point.
So do we need a motion to approve it?
Yes, we need a motion to approve the floodplain special permit.
Okay, so moved.
Thank you, Steve, for the motion.
Mr. Chair?
Kevin?
I'd like to just amend the motion to read as on our agenda. Motion to approve the issuance of a special permit pursuant to Land Court's separate and final judgment.
Okay, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, so it's a friendly motion. Steve, your motion is there. Do we have a second?
Second.
That's a second from Joe. Thank you. Is there any further discussion from members of the board? Hearing none. I will go to the...
Oh, Mr. Chairman, sorry.
Yes, please.
I just had one quick item, which was that under section 175, 13.4C2, the applicant has to submit that, from a registered engineer, that the... I'm sorry, I want to get it right. I'm sorry. So it says that the proposed use, including filling or excavating when combined with all existing uses, shall not increase the water surface elevation of the 100-year flood more than zero inch at any point. This is to be so certified to the Planning Board by a registered professional engineer upon application for the special permit. And I just want the Planning Board to know that we did receive that certification on July 1st, 2019.
Thank you, Amy. So that condition of the process has already been met?
It has. It has. And that was part of the judge's reason for his separate and final judgment.
Thank you. So we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion from members of the board? Okay. Go down the line one more time. Kevin?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Scott is abstaining or recused from this matter. Joe?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. Moving along, we have public hearings regarding the upcoming town meeting warrant. There are three items up on this agenda item, to be redundant. The first one is the proposed rezoning of Zero Rear East Main Street, which is MAP 11, Parcels 14-01, 15 and 16, 238 East Main Street, MAP 11, Parcels 17, from Residential 80 to the industrial zoning district. Paul, do you want to kind of give the... That is the Mastod property rezoning, correct?
Correct. Did I see representatives from Mastod here, so just as a bit of context. This has been something that the town in Mastod has been discussing for several years, and recently, Mastod has come to us with this request to rezone those four parcels. They're on 123, right at 495. It's right where the salt shed is, and that's one of the parcels. And in our relationship with the state, with the Commonwealth, we agreed to act as the facilitator of getting this onto the warrant, but the proponent is Mastod.
Thank you, Paul. I believe we do have representatives from Mastod on the call?
We do.
Okay. Mr. Cox, if you would like to just give a brief overview of the meat of this item, understanding that I think we had a preliminary discussion about this a couple of months ago, but obviously, there are a number of people on this Zoom call who are hearing about this for the first time. So just to kind of start from square one.
Thank you. Would you get permission? I'd like to share my screen.
Sure, please do.
Very good. So as a quick setup, my name is Tom Cox. I work for a company called Greystone. We provide real estate services to Mastod, and I've been working with Mastod on the project. We also have on the phone or on the video call here today Craig McEwen from Mastod Real Estate, and Zach Worth, who works with me at Greystone. As a quick setup, Paul, it noted that we've been in discussions with the town about Mastod's property here on Route 123 and 495 for the last couple of years. The thought process is to perhaps repurpose all or a portion of Mastod's property to allow for an alternative tax, local tax base. It's a request that we at Mastod get on a frequent basis from various communities, and the Commonwealth and Mastod are happy to entertain it when it makes sense from Mastod's operational purposes. And I'll talk a little bit about what that means. And then at the end of my presentation, separate distinct from the request here tonight, I'll give 30 seconds on what Mastod would need to do to dispose of this property if and when it ultimately got to that decision.
Thank you.
So we have here on this slide, this is the property. It's approximately 36.9 acres in total. It's got frontage along 495 to the bottom of this plan, and then to the right of this plan along Route 123 East Main Street. We have located off of East Main Street, we Mastod, that is, a curb cut that provides access to an active Mastod facility. That active Mastod facility includes snow and ice, as well as a local office for the district. And then they use the property for various project laydowns in this part of the district as well. So on a daily basis, Mastod has staff that works out of the site, and then obviously, during snow and ice season, you all see a little bit more activity on this site. At the top of the plan, I'll note that there is a town-owned parcel of land that was once owned by Mastod, that was transferred to the town sometime in the past. And that parcel of land separates the properties that we're going to be talking about with regard to the zoning from the direct abutter to the top of this plan. And I'm going to show my last slide, some general measurements to show the separation of Mastod's property from kind of a butters. You see here, and this is from your all GIS web-based platform, and this is basically a screenshot that shows various attributes of the property. It shows the property boundaries, which are here in orange, and it also then shows some floodplain areas and wetlands that are associated mostly with the Canoe River to the top left of the plan. And then you see here in purple, like a well-protection head district that exists on the property as well. So the purpose I want to show you kind of on this plan is just, you know, not only the property lines, but how it fits into your local zoning and your local environmental controls, above and beyond just the zoning code, but then also kind of from the floodplain, wetland, and then the wellhead protection district. So again, property lines are in orange. Wetlands in the Canoe River are at the top left, and hopefully, you can see my cursor as I'm showing this. And then the purple sheet...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's the well-protection zone, as you can see, covers the vast majority of the site. And I'm happy to talk back and forth when questions come up on this. The property presently is zoned for residential purposes, consistent with some of the adjacent zoning districts, and it maybe is more clearly shown on this plan here. So to the left, you see our property, which again is shown in the orange outlines. It's four properties, excuse me, per your assessor's information. And the yellow-ish is a residential zoning district. The red is a commercial zoning district. And then the purple in the bottom right is an industrial zoning district, and I called out East Star Business Park. I think you all are pretty much aware of where that's located with regard to Leonard Street and Route 123, the intersection there. After various discussions with Town Hall and others at Mastod in looking at the zoning code between a non-residential for use, we thought industrial would be more appropriate than another, just because it had consistent uses that were across the street, and then also took into consideration more retail-type uses, perhaps, that would be more convenient being right off of 495 and 123 and et cetera. So where we, Mastod, are proposing is to include our property located within the industrial zoning district, consistent with the zoning that you find immediately across the street on the corner of Leonard Street. When I say across the street, it's to the right of this plan that you're all seeing on the plan here. I noted previously the town-owned parcel of land that separates our property from the abutter, Red Mill Village, which is here. You can see here is the town-owned parcel of land here that separates it. And then I'll go to my last slide here. This shows it's almost 300 feet separation of the town-owned 10-acre parcel of land from that property, or that development, I should say. So we're not proposing at this time, nor is the town, any change to that parcel of land from a zoning perspective or from a repurposing perspective. So that 281 feet provides for a nice buffer between any proposed use that would happen on Mastod's property and the abutting property. That natural buffer would exist. Just briefly, and I'll go back to this, to the extent that we got to a point and had favorable action at town meeting to rezone this parcel of land, any developer that would be chosen through the procurement process, which I'll touch on in a minute, as I said, would have to go through any and all state and local permitting processes. So to the extent that they sought a permit by way of example, a special permit for the town, they'd have to get that town permit. To the extent that their project triggered MEPA rules and regulations, they would have to get MEPA approval. Just because it is a Commonwealth-owned property today, there's no relief on a go-forward basis by any private developer. There'll be no special treatment like in the description. Any rule that would apply as if this was private property would apply in the future, and that would all be an open and public process, whether it be the local permitting and/or the MEPA process, and to the extent that there's any federal rules that would need to apply, again, the developer would have to go through that. So any traffic mitigation that might be needed as a result of that development would need to be... as a result of that development would need to be discussed. Any setback issues above and beyond what the zoning code requires, you know, or conservation rules kind of require et cetera, would all be discussed at that point in time through that local permitting and state process. So this is only one step in, and I'm probably, and I know I'm stating the obvious to the planning board, to the members of the general public, the first step in many, many, many that would occur into the future. Lastly, to the extent that Mastod sold this property, a couple of different things would happen. I've noted before that Mastod has active operations on the site. As you can see, probably from this map, you know, we occupy a very small portion of the entire site, but it's out in the front, exactly where you probably see an entrance coordinated with a new traffic signal that exists out there, et cetera. So our Mastod operations would likely have to move, not likely, they would absolutely have to move on site. And anything that we do from the Mastod's perspective would have to have enough economic value in a development to pay for that. Because Mastod, as we entertain these types of discussions at the local level, when asked by communities or if a developer happens to ask about a property, Mastod doesn't necessarily have the funding to relocate this. So that would have to be part of any development that would occur. And that relocation of Mastod's operations would have to be totally funded through a project. You know, so just by way of example, if it costs $2 to relocate the Mastod's facilities, Mastod wouldn't sell it for a dollar and then have to spend a dollar. And at the end of the day, I'm not so sure Mastod would proceed if it's just going to be a break-even analysis too. So there's that process that needs to, or that hurdle that needs to be overcome if and when a process occurs. I said lastly, but I'm going to say lastly one last time, is that to the extent that we go through a process and sell this, it has to go through a very public procurement process. Mastod would have to advertise it in the central register with the Secretary of State. It would have to be published in the local newspaper. We always, when I say we, I know I'm with Greystone, but I say we with Mastod, we always reach out to the local town and have an intermational session before we put it out to bid. So there'll be another public process that would be part of that, if to the extent we put this out to bid and we work with the Town Hall, the conformant community. And then we'd have to notify, you know, developers that might have interest in the property, and we would expose it, lack of better description, to a big audience, so that, you know, that everybody would have an opportunity that would have the interested to pursue the property. That's a standard process at Mastod when it comes to procurement. We, Craig and I, just went through this down on the cake in Bostol, where the town, very similar to this, although there wasn't an active operation on that property, asked Mastod to repurpose its site for alternative tax purposes. And we designated a developer, I think about two weeks ago, and are working with that developer on his development plan as we speak and et cetera. So hopefully that makes sense. And I, hopefully I wasn't too long-winded, Mr. Chairman, and Board members, members of the community. I'm happy to answer any questions that come up as you consider this proposal. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. And just to kind of restate what you said again, there are zero specific developments for this site that we are reviewing at this time.
That is correct.
That would be based on whoever came in and wanted to purchase the site for whatever use they envisioned.
That is 100% correct, Mr. Chairman. And it has not been offered publicly or not, and we have no act of discussion with any developer.
Okay. I'll first go to members of the board, if there are any questions for Mr. Cox regarding this proposed zoning amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself from the action of the board.
Thank you, Orrin.
Mr. Shear?
Yes, Kevin.
So going back in time, I was somebody who thought that the Blue Star Business Park should have been zoned commercial, not industrial. Everything that they're doing across the street could have been built in a commercial zone, just as well as an industrial zone. Our industrial zoning restricts some use that many people are concerned about. For example, heavy manufacturing, auto repair, that kind of thing. But it does provide for warehouse space, flex use, basically everything that Condi is doing across the street. But what commercial does allow for, that industrial does not, is municipal use, recreational-type facilities, things that you cannot build in an industrial zone. So my question to Mr. Cox is, given that the adjacent land is commercial, I understand across the street is industrial, but given that the adjacent land is commercial, did you consider asking for that to be rezoned commercial? And if so, what was the reasoning behind industrial?
Thank you. Thank you for that question. So when we looked at the zoning code and looked at the schedule of uses that allowed various uses, and perhaps it was a mistake kind of on our part, we looked at what the market, the market quote-unquote, would absorb. And industrial uses are very popular kind of at this point in time, whether it's here in 495 and other areas. And we looked at, and again, perhaps mistakenly, and heard from the town that they didn't want necessarily to have mixed-use development, and, you know, that would have residential, for example, not quoting anybody, but, you know, so therefore lack of better description defaulted to industrial. There isn't, you know, we could have a discussion as we progress to industrial, prohibit against, you know, some uses. They wouldn't want to close out all uses. And I worked with Mastod kind of on that. But, you know, if there's a concern about the watershed, which I think would influence some of those uses that you mentioned kind of as well, whether or not they would be kind of allowed. But it was, you know, the discussion with the Town Hall, with thinking about the market, thinking kind of about the schedule of uses, and we came to industrial.
Thank you. Kevin, did you have any follow-up on that point, or did you want to?
If we have the time between now and the town meeting, I personally would like to go back and study our zoning. And I did this a few years back when we were, I was not on the planning board, but you were all planning for the Blue Star Business Park. And I always thought commercial was a good compromise, you know, for to restrict certain uses for, you know, that would alarm people or concern people. But it would also provide for most uses, our commercial zoning is very, what's the word I'm looking for, allowable as far as most, you know, we think of commercial zone, we think of, you know, retail. But as I mentioned, everything that Condi is doing across the street could have been built in a commercial zone property as well. So I'd like to go back and do a little bit more homework before we vote, but I'm just one member, so that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I mean, you're correct. Warehouse, storage, and distribution facilities by our bylaws are allowed in a commercial zone by special permit. And obviously, anything of the scope that's being built across the street meets the dimensional requirements to trigger a special permit review anyway. So it wouldn't change the process or change what was kind of being allowed on the site from that perspective. Any other members of the board have any comments or questions for Mr. Cox at this time?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Tom, could I just ask you, would the disposal process be a bid or an RSP?
We call them invitation to bids. And there would be certain conditions that one would have to comply with, including pricing.
But there would be no consideration for quality of development or frankly, quality of developer?
So we have some flexibility on that. And just by way of example, it's right now at Mastod, we're working on a property in Boston, the parcel 45, East Main Street. As part of that process and project, we included multiple conditions that the developer needed to meet. One of them was their ability to perform. One of them was also that they had to show kind of the past experience in being able to perform against the project that they're proposing as well. But we couldn't, and there's other very proactive conditions in there as well, but we can't be so prescriptive, excuse me, or so discretionary of like, we like this group over that group. We could put in certain, you know, conditions or what have you, but it doesn't allow for a, like a lack of better description, and I'm sorry for the description, but a beauty contest that we have, excuse me, the city of Boston has, where they may say, well, jeez, I'd rather the gray house versus the white house because, you know, different, you know, conditions or whatever, or the three-story versus the two-story, just because we're more, you know, highest bid and compliance with the bid protocol. Sorry for a little long-winded there, Mr. Joe.
We also require, this is Craig McKeown from Mastod, we also require evidence of financial stability from any and all bidders, so we can ensure that, you know, they're not going, they're not some solvent or bankrupt development or what have you. But we ensure that we get the highest responsible bidder.
Thank you. Are there any comments from members of the board at this point? Okay, I'm hearing silence here. So I'll move and open this up to...
Chair, can I just, at one point?
Sure, Paul.
Very quickly, that recently I did a fairly rough inventory of vacant land in commercial and industrial zoning, and really not much. You know, this will, could, in a few years, really become like an extremely tight aspect of Norton. And, you know, this would obviously, whether it's zoned commercial or industrial, would provide some breathing room for us. And obviously, with the location, this is obviously prime area. But obviously, as this, we go through, we would, you know, the town will, you know, working with the community, need to determine what that appropriate area would be. But I just want to make the point that there's not a great deal of vacant land that could be built for commercial or industrial development left.
Understood, Paul. Thank you for your perspective on this in terms of the big picture of planning and development within the town. So at this point, I will look for any comments from members of the public regarding this item. Again, there are, as far as I can see, there are 86 participants in the Zoom meeting here today. So I'm going to do my best to show preference to people who have raised their hand figuratively or literally within the app. And if you want to, you can also message myself directly through the chat function. I see two people already. So I see Gary and I see Maureen. Maureen, I'm going to go with ladies first here. Do you have any, and if you can ask any questions specifically to myself, the chair, and I'll pass them along to representatives from Mastod or other people as makes sense.
Hey, thank you. I appreciate you. My name is Maureen Shrozinski. I reside at 283 East Main Street. I am president of the Kingsbury Hill Condo Association, which is in that location. So I guess I would begin my questions by first thanking the individual who raised the question of commercial versus industrial. We have industrial in that area, the whole Blue Star development, quite a sore on what we believe was, what we know was farmland in the past, in which the Farm Preservation Society suggested not be used, but that came up after town meeting. So I guess my concern relates to especially changing it to industrial with the wetlands and wellhead protection area. To me, there would be a higher risk of some developer coming in that would have an impact on that area in an industrially disowned area versus commercial. So my question would relate to why the choice of industrial versus commercial. And I heard DOT said the town, someone in the town suggested that. So I guess my question would be, who in the town is suggesting that that be industrial versus commercial rezoning? That's, and I have a couple of other questions.
Well, I don't think we're going to get into calling people out by name at this point in a public hearing. But I think that it's not that any of those decisions would be made by multiple people working in concert. And again, this is, this was not a, I'm speaking, Mr. Cox, please feel free to chime in, but this wasn't a, these were not marching orders given to you. These are, this is a decision that you made, reviewing the state of the commercial real estate market in this area, as well as a number of other factors, correct?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. Yeah, we had discussions, but the decision was on our side of the ledger. There was no direction to include it in the industrial.
Okay, well, thank you for that. My other, so what do you think is going to be the impact of putting industrial zoning in that area so close to the wetlands and the wellhead protection area?
I just, this is Craig McKeown from Mastod. By statute, we can't actually transact or convey land for development or sale as an agency of the Commonwealth without the proponent or the other party, whoever's going to buy it or develop it, filing an ENF with NEPA and either obtaining a NEPA certificate or not having to go through the review. So we can't do anything in terms, we can't, we can't release a deed until that actually occurs. So all those impacts will be weighed and go through the process that any developer would, with regards to the impact of wetlands or wellhead protection, any type of resources that might be affected.
But don't you think there's less of a chance of impact in a commercially zoned area than an industrial zoned area in terms of impact on the environment?
I think that's a bit, I think as one of the members of the board pointed out, there's not a whole lot of uses according to Norton zoning bylaw, which are permitted in an industrial zone, which aren't permitted in a commercial zone. The couple that stand out are auto body repair, or machine intensive processing, fabrication, those types of uses. Warehouses, storage facilities, distribution facilities, those are all allowed in a commercial zone by a special permit. But as Mr. McKeown said, anything that an applicant is proposing is going to go through a state-level environmental review. And that still, again, comes to the town to determine through our normal processes whether we would approve product or not.
Will it also go through a state-level traffic impact study? Since the, already we've noticed in the area with the Blue Star development, a significant increase in traffic. And the recommendation of one of the traffic studies for a roundabout in the area surrounding that property has not been able to development, be developed because of restrictions on another four-acre parcel in that area that is less close to the wetlands than this one. So I guess the question is, will there be a state-level traffic impact study done in relation to any development in that area?
I can't speak to a state-level review. I'll let you speak in a moment, Mr. McKeown. But I would expect that at the town level, nothing's going to go onto this parcel without a traffic study in our level at minimum. nothing's going to go onto this parcel without a traffic study in our level at minimum. I can't speak to what processes DOT has around the conveyance of the parcel in regards to traffic or not.
First and foremost, we are a transportation agency. However, we do have a lot of real estate and creating, statutorily, we're here to create revenue for the Commonwealth in being as may, any NEPA submission required, but as I told you, for any conveyance that we do with our land, required, it's called Section 61 findings, where they, they go through basically any of the traffic generation, any of the impacts to the local and surrounding transportation facets. So that said, it's, yes, they would have to show whether or not the thresholds will exceed, you know, whatever the trip level per day that NEPA would require.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So again, to restate, there would be a state-level traffic study involved in this process as well, which would involve Blue Star Business Park and anything else further happening in that development.
Having done some work for the state in the past, I would ask, when developers submit their bids and they meet all your requirements, are you not required to choose the lowest bidder?
Well, that's typically the, that's the threshold for procurement and, you know, construction contracts and what have you, buying anything for the most part, but when you're selling, you typically want to go with the highest responsible bid for the most money.
So there's no requirement by the state that if a developer puts a bid on this property, that you have to go with the lowest bid?
Oh, we go towards the highest responsible bidder.
They're looking to sell the property at the highest possible return?
I understand.
Other than procure something at the lowest possible price?
And then my...
But we would love the state to spend as little money as possible and make as much money as possible.
Wouldn't we all? And my last question relates to experiences we've had on a property that we own in this area, and given what happened with Blue Star, is not the rezoning of this area considered spot zoning, as was discussed at the time Blue Star came in, but other property in the area? And if so, if this is spot zoning, which I thought the town was opposed to, is the town going to support other opportunities in that area to do spot rezoning?
Spot rezoning, I'll answer this, Amy, I'm not sure if you're still on the Zoom call, but spot zoning is not allowed, period. This process would not be spot zoning because it is not singling out a specific single lot of property, extracting multiple lots, which are owned by multiple different parties. I don't think Amy is still on the call here. I haven't seen her.
Isn't all this property owned only by DOT right now? So isn't it spot zoning for DOT's property?
No, it is not.
If I could, it wouldn't be spot zoning because it's zoned industrial across the road.
Yeah.
Correct. But at the time, there was discussion about should other area in the land be rezoned at the time of Blue Star? And if it wasn't, it could be considered spot zoning? But now you're saying that's not the case.
Again, I would suggest it's not spot zoning without relitigating the Blue Star process of rezoning, but given that Blue Star is there, the fact that there's a property across the street being considered to be rezoned, that would not qualify as spot zoning, in my humble opinion.
And so if there was property across the street from Blue Star that we happen to own, will that be considered spot zoning?
You can't speak to hypotheticals at that, kind of, at that stage, so right now we're just focusing on this specific proposed zoning amendment, so I can't, we can't, I think that we've, kind of, can't go too far out on that limb further. Does that go through the list of questions that you have, Maureen, at this time?
I appreciate the opportunity to ask the questions, and I would just comment on, I understand the need for Norton to have developed property for tax base, but I do respectfully request that residents in the area be given consideration about the impact of these changes in that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Maureen. Gary, I've had you, I've seen you with the virtual hand up on your Zoom screen. I don't know exactly how to do that myself, but congratulations to you on getting that there. So, Mr. Perkins, I will, if you have any questions about this project, please address them to me, and I'll either address them or defer them to representatives from Mast dot as appropriate.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Gary Perkins, as you now know. I'm the chairman of the board of Red Mill Village. And just to answer your first question, if you touch the reactions button, I found it, there's a, it pops up and it lets you put your hand up if you want.
Gotcha. There you go.
First time I found it, too.
Learning something new every day.
Yes, well, you have to go to a five-year-old to learn that, really. The only thing, the only reason I wanted to get the floor was to ask you whether or not the board received the letter that I sent out on March 17th on behalf of the board and trustees of Red Mill Village. I see you shaking your head, yes.
Yes, I did.
I would ask that you folks consider that letter and this time, but keep in mind, when that property gets, if and when that property gets many trees, it can down, that currently act as a noise reduction for the homeowners of Red Mill Village. We already hear the highway, we've heard quite a few crashes on it from our homes, and if remove, and we just have 281, well, I don't know how many feet, but if they remove all those trees, we're going to have that much more noise, so we ask that the board keep that in mind and review everything else in a lot of ways.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Yes, we do have the letter from March 17th. We also have a letter from one of the residents of Red Mill Village in our folders as well. I think you touched on, and earlier you touched on traffic and safety, which I think we touched on a little bit earlier, the noise issue that you raised before, and again, the environmental concerns for the property located in the Zone 2, which I think we touched on a little bit, talking about the potential NEPA review of the project.
That's why I didn't bring them up here, the noise hadn't been spoken about. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's not, never a bad thing to hear people repeat points that are salient to the discussion, so. Additional person has his hand up. Mr. Siegel, I do see that you have your hand up to speak. We do have a letter for you in the folder, and again, just to clarify, you're speaking at this point as a member of the public, not a member of the board, correct?
That's correct. Thank you. Would it be possible to shoot to a share screen as well?
You should have that ability.
We have to close...
We'd have, we'd have to close the map here, Mr. Cox, I believe you're sharing at this point? So it should be available to you now, Orin.
Okay. See if this works. I'm a newbie, I have to forgive me.
Well, the top point's working right now, so go right ahead.
Makes things a little bit easier. Just so for clarity for the board and the people watching, this is, my understanding, this is where Red Mill Village is, and this property is basically going up along this way to around this area.
Yeah.
One of the things, this is clearly, it's in the Zone 2. One of the things that I want to point out is when the town rezoned Leonard Street for an industrial use, it did so knowing the developer and the purpose. This is an environmentally sensitive area, and yes, we went through NEPA and we had experts come out, and I asked the question, they're saying, is this too big? And they said, well, it qualifies under NEPA and it qualifies under their standards, but yeah, it really is too big. It's that kind of consideration that really gets concerning, especially when you have a project like this that's in, this is even closer to some, I think it's right on the Canoe River, and some water protected areas. To do so without information as to who's developing it could really be problematic. And I agree with the board members suggesting that maybe commercial would be better, probably for two reasons. The other thing, just in pointing out some specifics, right now Leonard Street is over here, and there's a traffic light, and I don't know whether Mr. Cox is, they're considering trying to tie into that traffic light or not, but in absence of that, having any kind of traffic coming out any other way would be really kind of problematic, in that right now I believe this is closed off to the traffic, being able to make a left-hand turn out of the site. So the only turn they could be making would be a right-hand turn unless they tied into that traffic light. So one of the things, and I understand you're going to come back and say a lot of this stuff can come back by permit, but if in fact we're talking about a project, and I understand you can't really identify a purchaser in advance, I'm just wondering whether or not, either by way of the report of the planning board, or in fact your offer itself, and what you propose, you could put some constraints on it to be wary, to be cognizant of its impact without us having to go and fight for requiring that they tie into this driveway. If in fact that's the only way this site can work, whether we could put it as part of our warrant, as an amendment, or you could put it, agree to put it in what you're proposing, that the developer will have to do something like that, will make a difference in being able to develop this property. I put this on, this is, this is the, one of the queue lanes provided in the Blue Star NEPA process. Now, I'm raising that because you guys are it. I mean, if you can't come up with a solution, giving this to anybody who's the highest bidder and say, you come up with a solution with us, is kind of problematic, and it's putting the cart before the horse. So I'm saying, help us. I mean, I understand the town wants the revenue. I understand putting something, whether it's commercial, industrial, right off of 495, makes more sense than putting a residential there. I understand, given everything being equal, that makes a lot of sense. But if you guys can't help us and you can't give direction, whether we put it in our warrant, whether you put it in your bid offer, coming up with suggestions to help resolve this issue has to be something that we would go to you for, rather than trying to get, you know, dueling consultants. That just wastes a lot of time and it really doesn't get to the real solution. I mean, just looking at this, and again, just taking, this was their 2024 build condition after they mitigated, and the real, the real area here is peak even. And if I'm reading this right, there's a 50% queue going awfully back to here, and that's with them without you doing anything. And looking going in the other direction, this goes past, this is a very active shopping center, and at that time of day, there's, there's a school, different types of facility, there's a kid camp and a school, it's a very active driveway at four to six o'clock at night, and right now that's blocked off. So that's, those are, that's two questions. The other question would be, this is just really showing the queue distances. One of the things that came up, and Maureen had mentioned it, and I want to come back to it, I don't know if it's the solution. It was a solution that DOT proposed, and if it's something, if it's something that makes sense, then it's something, whether it's part of our process or part of your process. The concern that I think Condyne referenced was, if it's a one lane over here, it really backs up traffic, they need a two lane. And what Maureen was talking about is this is, this is their land. If they were, if this was, if this was, they both were zoned commercial, and then you could acquire some additional area on this to make this a two lane, and this a two lane, if that resolves a good deal of the traffic, I want to know a way of going at it. I mean, if you put the, if you, if you work with the town to come up with a solution, I mean, my understanding, right now this is restricted conservation land, not because it's wet, but because they had to make up some conservation land when they were developing. It's also my understanding that at one point, they came up with an alternative site to help them with this restricted land that was even bigger than this land. So it looks to me like this is really available, and I don't know if it is a solution, I don't know how to make it work. I don't know whether it's the DOT that could make it part of their proposal that, and come up, or the town, or you can at least recommend it heavily to the town, because without it, I just see it's really become problematic for the whole, for the whole area. We're increasing, this is what they, they came up with, with some of these queuing, but if you notice, the two, the queuing for 95% is far less than what we're looking at when I had the mitigation queuing. Now, this is stuff that DOT has, I mean, they did these, they did these surveys, so, and they're, they're the best ones to come up with a solution. The impact going downstream from us is basically at Red Mill Village, you're looking at an average, an increase from, sorry, this was, this was no build to a build, this was for Condyne, and it went up over 60 points. They're both failing. But now we're going to be, we're looking at a situation where it's going to get worse. I mean, I don't know, you got a million, by my count, a million 400,000 square feet of property. I don't know what kind of use you can have. I happen to compare that to Blue Sky. In a Blue Sky, they have, they're Lot 5, it's comprised of a million 120, 40, 100, 1,147 square feet, thousand square feet. This is taking your lot sizes from the, to the town map, and so you have a million four. I'm assuming even if 300,000, 400,000 of that is wet. Blue Star basically has 128 cars, 63 trucks, and 18 truck storages. So we're talking about almost 200 additional cars. This is just, this is just one lot. So what's the impact of going back to this with another 200 cars coming out at peak hours? The other issue is industrial, you know, and you're going to have staggered work hours, or, you know, commercial is almost less invasive because that's all day long. The real impact is at night, is that this evening backup, and there just needs to be some way to address it. And, you know, whether or not you can come back to us with some suggestions, and whether the board could adopt that as part of their report, so they can report back to the town saying, we, you know, if you approve it, but we approved it with conditions that will have to be imposed upon any developer, or something, I don't have the answer. I don't have the answer. I just, I just see a major problem, and I see this is making it a lot worse.
Thank you, Orin. I think, I think that the representatives from Mast dot or other on the call have kind of heard loud and clear that traffic from, from three people who've spoke on the call today, that traffic in the area is a concern. Obviously, the Department of Transportation is very familiar with how all of this works, but if one of you just wants to restate, kind of, I think we touched on it briefly, but the point in the process where a traffic study would be done in relation to a potential project, understanding that you don't have any prospective bidders lined up for this project, so we can't really know the impact until we have an idea what's going to go in there, so just in terms of restating the timing and the process of bidding, traffic study, et cetera.
Craig McKeown, Mast DOT, again, your first, the impact line you showed with the queue times and whatnot, I believe that was the initial traffic study. Full disclosure, we have approval, we're moving forward, they're doing a state highway layout alteration now, where part of the traffic mitigation for Blue Star, they had requested a curb cut for a right turn in between Leonard Street and the 495 ramp to alleviate traffic and facilitate access to the site. That prior, that's before the actual signalized intersection. And my assumption is the suggestion that you had showed for the actual rotary, full disclosure, our state highway layout ends at Leonard Street, that's all town layout. Given that Condyne, when building out Blue Star, that was likely part of their environmental impact study per NEPA, which, it's called Section 61, they make suggestions as to how the developer can alleviate any impacts from traffic and actual curb count to their site as a result of their development, and a rotary was, may have been suggested, considering they would, they would have been footing the bill for the improvements. With that said, that might, may or may not have, I mean, you never know until you try, but there's probably levels of complexity with regards to conservation land being there. But again, just to echo the point from before, anybody who buys this, we can't transact, we can't, they can't wire us money, we can't release a deed and sign a deed to anything or... we can't, they can't wire us money, we can't release a deed and sign a deed to anything or put forward a development until they, they actually file with MIPA and go through all of those, all of those hoops, for the, for the actual most part. And perchance, if someone actually did not trigger MIPA, or if someone bought it, they don't know what they're going to buy, they have to sign an affidavit saying that it won't, that they won't develop anything on that land for five years. So there's moratorium as to what, I mean, I mean, with deep pockets, get land back, I've never seen it happen. But that being said, we, we don't want egg on our face as an agency of the Commonwealth creating a mess or an impact to transportation. I don't know if that answers your question.
And I think to speak more directly to the speaker's point, Mr. Cox, you had mentioned some potential conditions for a bid. What a potential condition for a bid that would be, something that would fit within your general framework, would be that the proposed development does not impose an undue restriction on traffic flow in the area over and above current uses.
We can work on type one condition to be included within a yes, Mr. Chairman. You know, how, how exactly that would be phrased, you know, or, or, you know, without the review and approval of Mast dot, you know, et cetera, et cetera, we can, we can work on those type of conditions, yes.
I am not a lawyer, so I understand that there are multiple layers of review that would be involved in the creation of that kind of invitation to bid. But I think that's something that makes sense to me, I think speaks to the, the points that were raised by three members of the public who've spoken this evening.
And I'm sorry, just last quick comment, is I think we can say tonight that we can absolutely commit to improving that type of language in that Mast dot would work with, I'll call it the town manager's office, because he's the most senior, you know, I think appointed official in town, they'll overview it with that office prior to it being released. We can absolutely make that type of commitment, that that, that type of local coordination with the town would occur.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. I do not, let me scroll through here, I do not see anybody else from members of the public with their hands raised virtually or physically. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak further on this potential zoning amendment for town meeting?
Yes, Route 123 was widened back in 1978 and ordered that because of the construction of 495.
Thank you, Peter. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this amendment? Otherwise, I would look to see if any other members of the, yes, Kevin?
So this discussion gave me the opportunity to do a little bit of research, so just so everybody is aware, where I for one do not support rezoning to industrial, and I explained a little bit why, but the only difference between industrial and commercial, of course, a lot of the other items require a special permit, but given that this is in a zone to water protection area, we would have to look for a special permit anyway. But the only thing that commercial would restrict, I guess the application over industrial is, in commercial, you cannot have factories, manufacturing firms, machine intensive processing, fabrication, and assembly, auto body repair, paint, soldering, or welding shops. So I don't think you would want to have any of those in this, in this area anyway. So commercial would allow for, you know, warehouse space, wholesale space, automotive sales, all of those things, some of them requiring a special permit, but like you mentioned, we would have to approve a special permit anyway. But what commercial does allow for is that industrial does not, are things like public parks, playgrounds, recreational use, golf course, public membership type of a recreation facility, or a health club, that kind of thing. So those type of uses and a bed and breakfast. Bed and breakfast, by the way, is the only residential use that differs between commercial and industrial. Typical dwellings are not allowed in industrial or commercial. So the direction that you have gotten from the town hall, I think may have been misled. So anyway, you know, given that, I would support rezoning to commercial, but not industrial. And I would like to ask Mr. Cox if, if he has any concerns about that.
Sure, I think that's, Mr. Cox, if you would like to respond to that, you can.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Kevin. In going back and forth by text with Craig on this, I think we would be okay with, with the commercial. We, we, Mast dot, we want to work with the town to find the best use, our alternative use for the property. The extent that that's commercial versus industrial, I think we're somewhat kind of agnostic, particularly based upon the planning board members' kind of general overview of the schedule of uses there, et cetera. So we're, I think we're okay with an alternative use, but I'm saying use, but I mean zoning district, you know, than the industrial one that was originally thought. Hopefully that could still be addressed at this year's town meeting.
Understood, thank you for clarifying that point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, one second, Joe, I do have one. Paul, just speaking for a couple of members of the public who have sent messages to me, is the Mast dot presentation available on the planning board's website for people, for members of the public to review?
If it's not, we'll make it available. Some informa, we have a public access site, might not, this might have come in after we had done our last update, so I will make sure it's up there tomorrow.
And that link is on the Norton Town website with the, on the planning board page, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And if anybody has any questions finding it, they should be, they should email you, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry to cut you off there, Joe, I wanted to make sure that anybody wanted to, to look at this for some, some light reading, had the opportunity to. But Joe, is there anything further you want? Maureen, I do see your hand up as well, so I'll get to you in a second.
Yep, thank you.
Joe, go right ahead.
Yeah, I, in response to Kevin's point, and I fully understand it, and I think typically when we think of factories, manufacturing firms, we think, you know, 50 years ago, steel manufacturing, heavy machinery and the like. I'm more concerned in today's economy that we're precluding by, by zoning this commercial as opposed to industrial, we're precluding something like an Almalem, or high-tech manufacturing that does not have that traditional heavy industry, I'll call it baggage, that what we assume is, is part of the manufacturing process. I think in terms of whether it's going to allow a golf course, municipal facilities alike, let's face it, this is going to be very expensive property, that the economics of which are not going to allow, not going to justify that type of land usage. So I think those uses, the fact that we're giving those up by zoning them industrial is somewhat moot. Again, my concern is that we may be precluding something that, that we would find desirable, given the fact that obviously the, a building over 2,500 square feet, the fact that it's in a water resource protection district, it's going to have to jump a number of special permit hurdles, so that I think we'd be narrowing the market, so to speak, for potential uses by going the commercial route.
Yeah. Thank you, Joe, for your thoughts. I would just, I have the, at Kevin's, he didn't suggest it, but I did anyway, I pulled up the, the use chart as well, and research and technical laboratories are allowed by a special permit in a commercial zone.
Well, that's research, but manufacturing of, I think would fall.
That is, yeah, it, it is something that would probably not be allowed by the use table. So yes, I understand your point. Maureen, I apologize, I'm not going to try and say your last name, because I feel like I would not do it justice, but I know you did have your, I know you did have your hand up, so.
It's okay. My question is, if we're, you're now considering the possibility of commercial, and I would, to the earlier point raised, that even some of the more high-tech manufacturing companies have demonstrated significant impacts on the environment, and I will use, the manufacturer of marijuana has an impact on the environment by the odor and some of the offshoot from that. But so if there's a concern, are you still considering changing to commercial? Why is there a rush to go to the town meeting now with the warrant saying industrial?
That's something that the board will have to review as we discuss our recommendation to town meeting on this article. Obviously, the point raised to versus industrial versus commercial is about an hour old. So obviously, we're going to take our time and measure that. You mentioned marijuana, that is another use, which is only allowed in an industrial zone. So those are all factors that we would have to weigh.
Manufacturing or retail, can retail be in a commercial district? I think it's, isn't the manufacturer industrial?
Marijuana establishments are only in industrial and only by a special permit.
Well, given that we have the industrial area right across the street, I think that would be enough. But I would respectfully request that the committee sincerely look at the option of commercial versus industrial for that area, given the impact on traffic, the environment, and the community, property owners, and taxpayers that live in the area. So thank you.
Thank you. I do see one additional hand raised digitally, I'm just going to, I'm not ignoring you, I'm just scrolling through to make sure that anybody who hasn't had a chance to speak yet does. I don't see anybody further, but Orin, if you'd like to add an additional question or comment, please do.
Sure, again, speaking for myself, and Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you have the answer, but I'm curious, and maybe you can check with council, whether at town meeting, it is, can be amended from an industrial district to a commercial district, whether that goes beyond what's allowable as an amendment? And I don't, I don't know the answer, I've got it, you might either, but you might, you might want to inquire of it, let the public know.
That is something that I think will be discussed with town council, and that would be something that, as a, as a general rule, amendments, whether they are accepted or not, go to the town moderator to determine whether they fit within the scope of the article. So that's something that we would address as part of our process prior to town meeting, and if it moves forward, at town meeting itself. I think that, I think speaking personally, we probably want to, I don't know if we would want to, we'll have our final vote on a recommendation this evening, I know Kevin, you said you wanted to, to wait a little bit.
I'm, I'm good now, I've done my research while we had this discussion, so I'm prepared to rezoning to commercial, but I'm not going to vote for industrial rezoning.
But again, I think, are there any further questions from members of the public? As, I think it does make sense to probably check with town council just regarding the wording of things on the warrant, et cetera, and how we would move forward with this versus commercial or industrial. We do have that additional, our additional, our next meeting on the 6th, where we can continue to discuss these articles. But if anybody would like to make a motion one way or the other in terms of proceeding and recommending, please feel free, I do not see any other members of the public who are looking to comment at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we table this until the 6th.
It is a, yeah, so I think, so you're moving to continue it to the 6th?
Table that decision, or continue the public hearing, whichever you prefer.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Julie. So any further discussions from members of the board?
And if I may, the only reason I'm prepared to continue this is to get an opinion from town council, but I strongly believe that any change other than one that has been advertised would be beyond, we not only run afoul of, of the town meeting and the scope of the article, but we've advertised that it's for an industrial use. So I think we're somewhat locked into pursuing this course or denying, denying it for this round, so I'd await town council's opinion.
I strongly second Joe's comments there. Thank you, Steve. Hearing no further discussion from members of the board, I will go through a roll. Kevin?
What's the question?
The motion is to continue the discussion on this public hearing to the 6th meeting to await some clarification from town council.
Do we, do we need a second on Joe's motion?
There has been a second.
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. Joe?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I will put yes, and Mr. Siegel is recused from this matter. So we'll pick up our discussion regarding this zoning amendment on April the 6th, and continue forward. The next town meeting, reproposed rezoning is for Zero White Street, located at map five, parcels 33 and 33-01, from R80 to the commercial zoning district. We do have additional items for that in our folders. Paul, is there a specific overview for this project that somebody is ready to present? Do you know?
Yes, and I see Jim Riley here, I don't know who else from your group here, but Jim's here.
Yes, thank you both, Mr. Chair and Paul. So I've got a couple of comments for you. My name is Jim Riley, and I am the owner of Cross Real Estate here in town. I'm also the chair of the Board of Assessors, so I just want to make sure that, full disclosure. And then I'm going to ask one of the owner's sons, Matt Drain, if he would share his screen, he has a couple of PowerPoint slides, if that's all right, with the chair.
Yes, sounds good. So it, picture is worth a thousand words.
Yeah, we're hoping to speed it along for you.
All right, I'll start that now.
Thank you, Matt. So the request before you is to review, to review the zoning designation for this piece of parcel of land, there's actually two parcels here, on the exact same side that we're, of east side of town that we were talking about, these parcels are on Route 123, the east main street section, at Newland Street and White Street. So they will abut what we were just talking about, the Red Mill Village, and right at the intersection where Bernium Fields is located. So the reason that we're here tonight is to seek a correction to a Scrivner's error on the zoning maps for these two parcels. The two owners are on the call, that would be Lucille Drain and Janine Kamarda, and after my opening comments, I'll invite them to add their comments as well. Mrs. Drain owns the larger, our parcel, it's about 33,000 square feet, which, just so people know, that's about three quarters of an acre. Mrs. Drain is actually the widow of John or Jack Drain, who was a long-term resident in town, he was a business owner of the Charlie Plaza, and on several boards in town, but also a past select board member, so very, very involved in the community. And her son Matt is the one that's going to help me with the slides tonight. Matt also lives in town with his family, and so they've added a couple of generations to the, to the Drains in town. The reason I mention this is just so you know that these are, these are town people that are, that are owning this parcel. So on the parcels that we're talking about here, the land was purchased in 1978 for the Drains, and the Kamardas was previous. the Drains, and the Kamardas was previous to that. The first map that you're looking at, these are copies of our zoning maps from town from days gone by. So this is a 1978 map, which would be the year the parcel was purchased. And the reason we're showing it to you this way is so you can see the legend on the lower-left side, and if you follow along, you'll see the C, and it's a little light, but those are actually Xs or crosses in that section. If you move to the square with the red circle, you'll see that there's a little triangle there in that circle, and that's filled in with the Xs. That would indicate that it's a commercial zone. Now, for reference to this, you see to the left of the circle, all those Xs all along 123 there, to the north of, or the above 123 there, that's all Red Mill Village. So Red Mill Village is a commercial zone area. The triangle that is in question is also a commercial zone. And then just so you can tell, the dark area is where Burnham Fields is, and that would be heavy industrial at the time. So I'll ask Matt if he'll go to the second slide, and you can see a more close-up view with the hatch marks, a little antiquated, but that's the best we had back in those days, that shows both Red Mill Village and the triangle parcel are all commercial. When we move to slide number three, you're gonna see our zoning maps from 1983. And the legend, it's a little hard for you to see there, but the, there will be some Vs., I affectionately call them as Vs., and that would indicate a commercial zone. The water or wavy cattle lines would indicate a residential slash agricultural two-zone. So what we're showing here, as we move to the next slide, a more close-up of that circle area, you've got Red Mill Village with all the Vs., and then you have the triangle with both the Vs. and the wavy water. So the triangle in question, the two parcels that have nicked that triangle, actually have both zonings on the same parcel. So then if we go to the next slide, which would be slide number five, you can see, this is done, a engineer, John Vance, he's a longtime, well-respected registered professional engineer in town, who did a plan of this particular triangle parcel. If you note in the lower-left-hand corner, he noted right on the plan, zoning district is commercial. He stamped it with his professional stamp, so he's certifying, he had no reason to indicate that it wouldn't be what it was. And then to the right, you can see the received circle. He sent us to the town, the town stamped it as received, and accepted this plan from him. If we go to the next slide, which would be number six, now we're looking at our 1988 zoning maps. And for five years now, and I'll ask Matt if he'll go to number seven, slide number seven, zooming in again, we have the same problem. We have two different kinds of zoning on the same parcel. So as we move to slide number eight, you can see that in 1999, the zoning has changed. So the circle there, and I'll ask Matt to go to number nine, which would be the more close-up, it's a little hard to see, but it seems to indicate that Red Mill Village stayed commercial, but the little triangle is all just white, and looks like it's been changed to residential 80, or what we call R80. So then if I go to the last slide, which is number 10, this will be our current zoning. So the pink would be Red Mill Village, the blue little triangle there would be the two parcels in question, and it looks like all the white all around it would be the R80 and not the commercial. So why the change in 1999? Well, in 1999, that's where our town went to this R40, R60, R80 zoning. We believe that someone, it was very innocent, we don't believe it was done on purpose, innocently made a change, they had to make a judgment call between the two, commercial and the residential, and they picked the residential, and since it was residential slash agricultural two, it fell in the R80 zone. So what we're requesting here is not a zoning change, we're requesting a correction to the zoning map. Now, the reason that we're doing it through this process is right in the middle of these years, when this, these two parcels had two zonings on the same parcel, is when we as a town, quote-unquote, and this was in May 13th of 85, at town meeting, and I just want to read you the one sentence, it's very long, but I'll read it to you. Town meeting approved, in addition to the zoning bylaw, quote, "map changes which do not affect the designation, location, or boundaries of zoning districts, and are limited to the addition of new streets or to other geographical features to bring up the map up-to-date, and to facilitate orientation, may be made from time to time without further action by the town meeting. But no change to the map which affects the designation, location, dimensions, or boundaries of zoning districts shall be permitted except when done pursuant to a town meeting," end of quote. So this change in the zoning bylaws of 1985 is, the situation we're dealing with now before us is an excellent example of just why this provision was put in place. So these Scrivener errors or these mistakes, you know, could be corrected. So in order to do our homework, I went down to our town clerk, Lucia Longhurst, and she provided me with the town warrants, the meeting minutes of each town meeting from 1978 until 1996. And I'll just hold up for you, this is all the copies that she gave me, everything's tabbed, and she was really wonderful to work with. So we searched through, and we could not find a record, I shouldn't say we, I searched through and could not find a record of these parcels being changed through the town meeting. So we're here before you, rather than come, you know, to the town, you know, for some kind of disservice that was done to the owner, that's not really Lucille Drain's style, she would like to go through the proper channels of coming to you, the planning board, and then ultimately we'll go to the town meeting to correct this Scrivener's error. So if this Scrivener's error is clear, the owners here request your approval tonight. If it's not clear, they do request that if you could just search your planning board records to make sure that if this change was made on purpose, and the property owners were properly notified, the parcels were posted with the proper notices, the proper public hearings were held, and the change was approved by the Attorney General's Office, that we provide them with this information. They, at this point, say that they were not notified of the change, and it was not done on purpose. What I would share is, in my knowing, Jack Drain, Jack loved this town, and the zoning map error is now coming to light because Lucille Drain is looking to see what can be done with this parcel. To be clear, there is no proposed sale or project proposed for this site. Lucille is seeking to do something nice for the town, as she did when she located Tom George of TMG Carpentry to revitalize the Charlie Plaza, and then also when she found Chad Dubek of Rustic Fire Protection to revitalize the Old Colony Service Station. Both, and by the way, both of these should be congratulated on their substantial involvement and investment in our town. The size of this parcel is three-quarters of an acre. It's a triangular shape with the property line setbacks, the one-third coverage ratio, the parking requirements, whatever's gonna be built on this land can't be a very big building. There are some people that have raised some concerns about correcting this error, and based on fear. We're trying to base it, you know, not on fear, but on facts. This would be commercial zoning, abutting Red Mill Village, which is also commercial zoning, not industrial zoning, which we just had a long conversation on. This parcel should also not be responsible for the traffic and noise from what's already been approved at Blue Star. It can be something that can enhance Red Mill Village specifically, and our town in general. The question should be, what would you like to see here? CPA, financial planner, lawyer, doctor, I mean, if we need a chiropractor, our hips, or knees, or eyes, you can kind of get the picture. As chair of the Board of Assessors in town, I know all too well how our town needs new growth, as we were just talking about it, and that new properties need to be fixed up and taxed to relieve the burden on our residences. Route 123 is a state-numbered highway, and this is exactly where commercial growth should be. So I would like to invite Lucille, or Matt, or Janine, if they have any other thoughts, feel free to jump in.
Lucille, I believe you're still muted on the meeting here.
Matt, if you want to take the screen down, that's fine, if you don't mute it anymore.
Sure, I can take it down.
All right, thank you.
I believe Lucille is trying to speak. I don't think I can unmute her directly.
Okay.
Lucille, if you hold down the spacebar on your computer, that should unmute you.
Okay.
Yep, as long as you hold it down, it'll stay unmuted.
Well, it's just that John and I bought the property in 1978 from the town, thinking it was commercial. And John never got around to it because he was too busy with Charlton Corner Plaza and so on. And now I've gone to Jim to see what I can do to, I'm getting a little older, and I want to get things settled for my boys. So I just want to get it corrected. We're not asking for a change, we just want it corrected to what it was originally, commercial, because we were never notified of anything about a change. That I can say 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucille. Do we have any specific questions from members of the board relating to this matter? I think that we've all got a little bit of a history lesson on zoning maps here.
F me!
So, members of the, please, Julie, go ahead.
So, real quick, I guess I'll direct it to Mr. Riley, and then, you know, to Tim, and then to Mr. Riley. So the warrant isn't really written up as a Scrivener's error. Is that the way that you guys want it written up? I mean, your explanation is a little different, I think, to public perception, maybe is a good way to put it?
So, we're not talking about a warrant or a meeting minute, because there was no warrant or meeting minute to change the zoning. What we're saying is a Scrivener's error was on the map, just on the map. So for five years, this particular parcel was indicated as having two different kinds of zones, commercial and residential. The only reason it didn't come up, and it certainly wasn't on you guys' watch, it was on someone else's watch, is nothing was planned to be done with it. So nobody brought it up and said, oh gee, I want to put something here, and then they said, oh, well, let's check the zoning and see what it was. I mean, it's just been vacant land for all these years. So yeah, so we're saying it's just a map that was a Scrivener's error, not the warrant or the meeting minutes.
Okay. And then, like, I think Paul put in our folder here, kind of how it's written up on the town meeting, warrant for this upcoming meeting in April as petitioned. So I think it would be helpful if we get to that point, and you present it, that you present it in the same manner, because the way that that's worded, I don't believe, has any mention of a Scrivener's error either, which I think is very helpful to know that it was very good to, you know, synchronize the maps and the timeline in order to help with that. Because I do think, you know, a lot of times when these things come up, it is with development in mind.
Yes, that's a very good suggestion, and I'll turn it to Paul on town council on how to reword that. Yes, I think that's a very good suggestion.
The petition itself does read as, we want to rezone this for this reason, and then it just kind of stops there. It is very to the point.
Sorry about that.
Which is a good thing generally, but in this case, it definitely, I don't think, gets the full picture of the history that you've given here. There are a number of, if there are any further comments from the board, I'll hold for those.
Tim, this is Joe, a couple of things. And first is a question to Mr. Riley. Have you had the opportunity to go, and I don't know whether the assessors' property cards back in '77 or '78 listed the zoning? I know that they do now, even though, and we had this issue on Mansfield Avenue a number of years ago, even though one doesn't, if you approve the other. But out of curiosity, did you have a chance to look back at property cards?
So we did try to do that. We do not have the physical card, so we don't have the record to confirm or deny that. Recently, we've taken the zoning off the property cards, just because we were running into so many of these problems, where the property card would say one thing, and the zoning map said something else. Now that we've really done a lot of work on the zoning maps, I fully expect we'll put those back on, but the records were just not there.
And two other comments, you know, the, I think it was 1977 plan that Jack Vance drew up. For those people who didn't know or don't remember Jack Vance...
For what, Joe?
All right. Well, Jack was, in essence, the town's engineer. I mean, he was never actually engaged in that capacity, but virtually every project that the town did, they used Jack as its engineer. In fact, Tim, because you live on John Scott Boulevard, that was laid out by Jack Vance. And then the only other, I'll just throw this concern out here on your behalf, the article is written, it talks about rezoning. Should that pass, your problems are solved. It basically says, never mind what's happened in the past, we're gonna rezone it just as a belt and suspenders. The problem is if it fails, then you're precluded from attempting to rezone it for at least two years. So that's, again, just something to keep in mind. I think, you know, the approach you're taking is the more non-confrontational approach, but you may be doing so at your client's own risk, so again, just put that out there.
And what would be alternatives to doing that, if, what do you think?
I mean, and again, I'm not offering any legal advice.
I agree.
It's worthless to you, but...
Yes, yes.
Again, what you're doing clears it up if it passes. If it doesn't pass, then you've got, you know, you've buried yourself in a, you've dug yourself a hole that you may not be able to get out of for a couple of years. I think the only recourse is frankly, attempting to get the Scrivener's error corrected, either through a court decision, or, and of course, that's costly. So again, I'm just putting out that the pitfalls of trying to get it rezoned through this process, and if you fail, then you're in a bit of an issue.
We appreciate that through the chair, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Yes, why don't we take it to council, and then maybe even talk to town council and Paul, and just make sure that things are worded properly, and if they want to pursue town meeting, continue after, if we can get the endorsement of the planning board, yes?
Understood. Are there any members of the planning board who would like to comment on this? Otherwise, I would move to members of the public who would look to comment. There are a number of public comment letters in our folders, and a few people who have raised their hands already. I'm hearing silence from members of the board, so I will move to them. Two people have their hands raised. I'll start with Mr. Murphy, since he is... since he is listed in the top left of my screen and he hasn't spoken yet today. So you get the double check mark in that respect. So again, please, if you could just state your name and address for the record and go ahead.
I'm Gary Murphy. I'm at 10 Newland Street, out of Red Mill, and been asked by the people on White Street and Newland Street in Red Mill to speak on their behalf. So we don't have a... We really have one major concern, and it's traffic. It's been particularly a key topic of the evening. This particular parcel sits on a curve on 123, which is a very heavy and high-speed traveled road. And quite honestly, red at the Newland intersection many times is near miss accidents or there is an accident. So that's our really only major concern with changing this from residential to commercial, because it will just, you know, add more traffic to that particular area. Occasionally, we have people coming up the wrong way on White Street. That can cause a problem, since it's one way. But if you add a commercial facility there, then you're going to have people coming in that may not be familiar with the area, and therefore, they're more apt to cause more problems. In order to take a left turn out of Newland or to take a left turn into Newland at any high-traffic period, you can wait for up to two minutes. So we're just concerned with adding more traffic to cause more concern with potential accidents. So we prefer that it remain residential at this point as opposed to shifting it to commercial. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, for your comments. Mr. Perkins, I see you are here as well. We do have the letter from you on behalf of Red Mill Village available to us. Would you want to... Let's see, that is dated on the 17th. Do you want to give a quick summary of that from your perspective?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm Gary Perkins, Chairman of the Board of Red Mill Village. I live at 65 Carding Road in Red Mill. I wrote this letter on behalf of the trustees as well as 152 residential homeowners of Red Mill Village. There are a number of items that we wanted to point out. Mr. Murphy talked about a couple of them. But we want to make sure that the Planning Board members are familiar with the traffic issues. On 123, as it stands now, there was a level of service report done during the Blue Star project. And adding more commercial traffic to 123 going up that way would just probably make that a little more difficult with the traffic. As Mr. Murphy said, coming out of Newland Street is already difficult. It's extremely difficult to take a left-hand turn onto Newland Street right now from 123 when you're heading towards Eastern. And there's a cutout in the road. And if there was a commercial piece of property there, coming out of that commercial piece of property, I believe you'd only be able to take a left-hand turn because of the markings in the road, which means people would be taking a left and probably trying to take a left on Newland to make a U-turn to end up taking a right-hand turn coming out of the property. So that creates a problem. There's also safety issues there. There's a site distance issue, which we talk about in the letter. And there's also the accidents that have already happened in on 123. On the Mass DOT intersection crash rate that was done in 2017 because of the father Blue Star beeper firing, it reflected five accidents at the intersection of Newland Street and 123 in the previous five-year period. There's been quite a few more since then. And specifically, we can tell you that on December 16, 2016, there was a significant crash when a driver went the wrong way up White Street, went right through two fences and some shrubs. And the vehicle ended up in the front porch and partially into the home at 18 White Street. It was quite a surprise for the homeowners. Furthermore, the Red Mill Village residents that front White Street reported numerous incidents of cars coming down White Street the wrong way. And that's a very small street. It's a one-way street. There's also a noise factor right now on White Street. The residents tell the Board of Trustees of Red Mill that the units fronting White Street are within 35 feet. There's already a lot of excessive noise from trucks, buses, and motorcycles using that street at all hours of the day and night. So if there was another commercial building there, it'd be that much more noisy traffic, most likely. As we understood it from reading everything, the basis for the change was that they claimed there was an error in the zoning map. However, from 1978, when one looks at the zoning act map, it looks like there were at least 16 times that it was listed on the maps that it was zoned as commercial. So it's kind of strange that in all those times, nobody realized there was an error there, if there was in fact an error there. Our synopsis is it's reasonably projected that should these parcels be rezoned and developed for commercial use, the value of the Red Mill Village properties immediately fronting Newland and White Street would be adversely affected. We don't believe, however, that if a residence was built on that site with the required variances, that it would unduly exacerbate any of the above concerns that we have for the residents of Red Mill Village. So that kind of summarizes our letter, and I hope that the Planning Board takes the time to read it and the attendant documents that came with it. I have a second issue I'd also like to discuss, if I could, on this subject. On Sunday, the 21st, I also forwarded a petition to the Town of Norton Zoning Board, to the Planning Committee. I'm not sure that you folks got that, though. I sent another email tonight to ask Paul whether I had received it. And I don't know if Paul answered to this call. But I'd like to just read. It's a short petition, and I'll tell you how many people signed it. And I've now sent it twice to you folks. But it says, "Petition to the Town of Norton Zoning Board regarding the proposed vote to amend the Norton zoning bylaw. We, the undersigned residents of the Town of Norton, all living within the Red Mill Village condominium complex, wish to express our opposition to the proposed amendment to the Norton zoning bylaw, Article 3 zoning map in districts in the Town of Norton zoning map to change the zoning district for the parcels of the land the shown of the Town of Norton. Assessors map 0 White Street, map 5, parcels 33 and 33 National 1, from a residential lady to a commercial district, and respectfully request that the Planning Board recommends rejection of this proposed amendment in its report to the town meeting." We have multiple pages. 155 homeowners at Red Mill signed this in over a three-day period. If we had had more time, we probably would end up with more signatures. So if you folks didn't receive this, the two times I've sent it, I'm happy to hand-deliver it tomorrow to the Town Hall if you need me to do so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
I've not received an email from you, Gary, other than the two letters, so...
It hasn't kicked back, Paul. It's funny, because I sent it a second... Maybe it went into spam or something? I don't understand.
It's possible. I'll get something in the morning from our spam filter. Maybe it's in there. But if not, you know, either of it can come out to you if you want to come by Town Hall and get a hard copy and then scan it.
I can hand you the hard copy tomorrow, if that's helpful.
Okay, that would work.
Your time.
I'll let you two arrange scheduling separately. But thank you, Mr. Perkins, for reading the content and the substance of the letter. And I appreciate your thoughts on it. Just to clarify one point of your letter, you mentioned that the residents who are on White Street, they mentioned that there's heavy traffic on White Street at all... from trucks at all hours. So there's trucks using the small one-way street at various times for... Is that to cut from Newland Street to East Main Street and take a couple of rights?
I believe that's the case. That's what the home... I don't live in that section of Red Mill. I live down the other section. But that's what the homeowners have said. It's very noisy all times of day and night from trucks, motorcycles, and... I forget what it was.
Sorry, did I cut out there for a second there?
I heard you.
Okay. I thought my connection blooped for a second there. So I wanted to make sure that what I said actually carried through into the meeting rather than me speaking to a wall.
No, the homeowners have reported to us that homes on White Street that are within 35 feet of White Street report excessive noise from trucks, buses, and motorcycles using the street at all hours. And they use it to cut, as you mentioned, they use it to take a right-hand turn off of Newland Street and to scoot down there and cut out the triangle.
That wouldn't be the choice I would make, but I am not driving something in that area. But that is... I can understand why that would be frustrating. Okay. I do have... Mr. Siegel, I do see you. I also see another member of the public with their hand raised. So I'm going to go to them first since I heard from you a little bit on the earlier matter. I don't have a last name, but I see Bill's iPad here. Who's... If you could just unmute yourself, use it... Hold down the spacebar or unmute yourself directly through the Zoom meeting. And then state your name and address for the record. You have to hold down the spacebar to unmute yourself if you want to. Otherwise, click the microphone in your bottom-left corner.
How is that better?
Yep.
Gotcha.
Yeah?
Gotcha. You're good.
Bill Burroughs, 26 Kensington Road in Norton. Okay? I just want to say I go down White Street probably three or four times a day. I've never, ever seen major problems, a lot of traffic. I just can't picture trucks or anything. I can picture school buses, but that's basically it. It's not that congested from the times that I see. I go there early in the morning, at supper time, probably three or four times a day. And I don't see a problem at all. I see more sections in town with traffic problems than this one.
Okay. Thank you very much. Orin?
I'm all set.
Orin, did you want to raise any specific points? We do have your letter in the folder. And Sandy, I see you with your hand raised next in line here.
Where's Sandy?
Oh, sure. Looks like she's looking to unmute herself here. No, it should be the microphone in the bottom-left-hand corner of the screen. Or Zoom should allow you to hold down the spacebar. And as long as you were holding down the spacebar, you would be unmuted. Not yet.
Maybe if you touch the screen once, the menu will appear.
Okay.
There you go, you got it. You're good.
Sandy Pulio, 10 White Street. And I do want to say that White Street can be very noisy at times. We start with 18-wheeler trucks coming down Newland and coming in front of my bedroom window, which is about 35 feet from the roadway. And it starts very early, and it continues until maybe 10:00, 10:30 at night. We have very loud motorcycles. We have school buses. We have a fair amount of traffic. And it's really something I want the Board to consider when they decide on what type of zoning they want to do here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. And as I scan through here, I don't see...
I'm...
Peter, you wanted to say something?
Yes, yes. Back in Friday, May 5, 1978, there was talks of a flea market on the intersection of East Main and White Street. And that got turned down. And Sludman John Drake said he adopted that Ronald White... That he had provided nearly enough space to a number of cars. 2008, that White has projected Ronald White's parking plans have been developed by an entity was willing to deliver that board directive to keep dust down. And then he intended to have a little pickup. But imagining that the flea market would have taken place then, we would have more traffic on White. And it's basically that that flea market took place would have approved back in May 1978.
That would have been different, Peter, definitely. Okay. I don't see any more hands. So Orin, I'm going to make you go ahead and speak now, even if you want to try and defer to somebody else.
That's right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Orin Siegel. Again, I'm speaking for myself. I live at 28 Carding Road, that's in Red Mill Village. If it's okay, I'd like to do a screen sharing with the Board.
Sure, you can go ahead. You've already did it once. Now I expect you to be an expert.
Give me a break. Got the wrong one. Hold on just for a second. Got to close. Wrong one.
We are all learning more about video conferencing in the past 12 months than we ever wanted to know, but...
Are you seeing that now?
We are not seeing it yet, but I'll give it a second to filter through the Internet. No, I'm not yet. I lost your camera, but I still don't see a PowerPoint here. There we go, got it. Your PowerPoint is up, but your microphone and camera are not.
I'm going audio. How about now?
Audio, yes.
Okay. Okay, just for an overview, this is literally Red Mill Village. We're talking about this triangle parcel right here. This is what it looks like. This is 33,000 square feet. There's a smaller parcel, which is only 4,700 square feet according to the town map. This is the White Street area that we're talking about. Just for your information, it's my understanding that this smaller parcel, in fact, has a Horizon zoning easement, 20 by 20, which almost cuts that parcel in half. So I'm not sure what, if anything, could be done within this parcel just by itself by reason of that easement. I think I furnished the Board with a copy of the actual easement agreement. Now, this is just an overview. This is White Street. And when they're saying how close they are to this street, these are the houses along White Street. Sandy is one of these houses. This is that area. This is... Now, this is 123. Along 123, just so you know, starting with almost the beginning of this triangle parcel, there's a lane restriction that starts there and runs all the way to Newland Street. This is a state road. They put in this lane restriction. And I question whether anybody would be able, if they put any kind of retail, any kind of commercial use over here, they'd be able to cross over these lines to make use of it, which means they'd be limited to a right-hand turn. And then I'm not sure how they'd get back going the other way. And I think that's a major problem with any kind of commercial use of this space. This is just a bird's-eye view of White Street itself. This is the street that they were reporting trucks, buses, and motorcycles. Again, as before, we're talking about... This is the Condy parking survey concluded that as built, they were going to have... It's going to be... It was an F. This is a no-build. This is with a build. But their building was going to increase by 60 seconds. And now, so just say... So this is, again, evening peaks. Afternoon peaks, which is basically from 4 to 6. Again, just for a bird's-eye view, this line represents a 500-foot line, Again, just for a bird's-eye view, this line represents a five-hundred-foot line, which is a site view coming out of Newland Street.
Okay.
Now, what I presented to the board, one of the other questions, issues you have here is basically, this is in an R-80, which is also in a Zone Two. Under Zone Two, R-80 requires eighty thousand square feet, and that's true for residential as well as commercial. So basically, any building that they wanted to build here, whether it be residential or commercial, would need to get a variance. Now, as a residential unit, I mean, and I think they've indicated, that's something that they probably could live with. If you look at the units around that location, basically, across the street on one-twenty-three, it's numerous houses, and they're all about one-acre lot lots. So I don't think they really have a problem asserting a hardship through residential on that triangle parcel, even though even that would be tight. But I would suggest for us to rezone, and that's what we're talking about here, rezone this from commercial, from residential to commercial, would be inviting somebody to use it for a purpose for which they have to get extraordinary remedy in order to use it in the first instance. And I don't see this, and I think that's problematic for the board in making any kind of decision to allow that to go forward. Two other questions, issues I had, I don't know that there's not a notice issue in terms of what's been noticed for this meeting and for the planning board for the town meeting. If, in fact, they're asking for a representation of a scrivener's error, we've had no notice of that. I was looking at the board, they posted no, none of this information, this is the first time that information's been given, and I'd suggest if that's in fact what they wanna pursue, they would, I would request that, A, they provide that information to the planning board and allow other residents to review it. There's no way I can just talk about seeing what's before me without reviewing the information, even if it were to be correct. So I would, A, ask them to provide that, questioning whether or not, if that's in fact what they're looking for, whether it's been properly noticed for the next planning board town meeting. And the other thing, just as a final note, as Joe pointed out, once they go forward, if they're rejected, there's a two-year limitation for them coming back. Right now, as a residential AD, they can put a residence there. If they're successful and they get commercial, they will be precluded from putting a residential unit on that space. And I would suggest that, if anything, that's the highest, the best use for that, given the problems with traffic and the area of trying to access that site, which is small, it will obviously need a variance, and I would suggest that a variance for residential use, which is consistent with the residential uses across the street, would be something that was attainable, whereas any kind of variance for a commercial space in that would be really problematic for one, and two, the board acting is a board to grant them a zoning change for that reason, zoning it into sites that on its face can't sustain the use without extraordinary relief. And again, that smaller parcel can't, it's five thousand square feet, you can't do anything on it. So unless it's really proposed as a single combined lot, even then, it's still under forty thousand square feet, which is like half what's required.
Yes.
Anything, I would ask that if the board's considering this at all, that the information that's been presented be made available so that other people can investigate what's done. The other questions that I had was, it appears to me, I think in nineteen ninety-nine, he referenced something about going from forty to sixty to eighty. At that point, and at some point, basically, the town has approved plans, and the map has been, went to town meeting and approved the town meeting. I'm not sure, I don't doubt that they questioned, they didn't know what it was, but A, they've been paying taxes, I'm assuming, on residential space for a long time, and two, this has come up on several different occasions, there's been several different map changes that have been approved by the town meeting. That would have indicated this property and showed what it was zoned as, with nobody stepping forward. And again, when these people purchased a unit, Red Mill Village was formed in two thousand and four, and I think these people purchased their units in two thousand and ten, two thousand and twelve, with reliance on the town's maps showing that they had a residential use across the street from them. And I think the board needs to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Siegel. And I think one of the points you made, Mr. Riley, that I was gonna mention is that, just to restate that the Norton's use tables do not allow a residential use in a commercial zone for a single-family dwelling or a single-family dwelling with an accessory. So that's something that, is something that you can evaluate. I know you said that you would kind of be checking on a couple of things, but just to state that, so you're, I'm sure you're aware, but I'm just restating it for you. We do have two other members of the public who have raised their virtual hands here, so I'm gonna go with who's in the top-left of my screen here, which is Ms. Murphy. If you would like to unmute yourself and, again, address any questions to myself, the chair, not that I'm that egotistical, but that's how it works, and if it makes sense to pass the load to Mr. Riley, we can do that.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn Murphy. I do live on ten Newland Street, and my husband Jerry did present his talk. I just wanted to let you know that Newland does actually face White Street, ten and twelve Newland, their land parcel faces White Street, so we are affected by this request. When I'm sitting on my porch during the summer hours, starting Thursdays to Sunday, campers come flying up around that corner, we see cars coming up the wrong way, I see a lot of buses, trucks, traffic. I know that that one way maybe should be someday thought about just cars only, and, you know, like we had just talked, so that was one of the things I want to mention. I think Orin just kinda answered my question, 'cause I raised my hand before that, but a gas station could be put there under commercial, correct?
I would have to check the use tables, and you're putting me on the spot here, but I'm gonna ramble until I can get to that point in the...
Well, my concern is Amazon's putting in a lot of these hub lockers, and I've researched the hub lockers, and what they wanna do is place deliveries of pickups in a twenty-four-seven gas station or convenient food mart that's open twenty-four-seven, and you could go and get your deliveries picked up at what they call Amazon hub lockers, or drop off your parcel to be sent back to Amazon. And we all know, Amazon is kinda running the world right now. So I wanted you to kinda consider that, could Amazon come in and put something there in that capacity?
Yeah, no, just to confirm, gasoline stations are allowed in both commercial and industrial uses, as well as in village commercial?
I thought...
Yeah. And I think, I would say, I've seen those package pickup lockers, whether Amazon or otherwise, in any number of locations.
I think that's a great place to put one.
They could, they could put one anywhere.
Right.
They could, so, yeah, but understanding that a gas station use would be a high-traffic use, so that would be something that would definitely be considered as part of any project. I'm not sure if it would fit there, but that is a whole separate discussion.
Okay.
But thank you for your thoughts.
Mr. Chair, would I be able to help with that conversation?
If you would like to respond, you can.
So just in terms of being in the water protection resource area, I think that would be prohibited, a restaurant, a gas station, I think that would be a pretty big hurdle to get over. Chair, I can confirm, though it's in Zone Two, which prohibits gas stations.
Thank you, Paul.
It's late in their bylaw as well.
Thank you. I had gotten to the use table, but hadn't drilled down to the additional level of detail, so thank you. We do have one other person with their virtual hand raised, the only note I see is Peg, so I'll just ask you to state your first and last name and address for the record here.
I'm Peg Dooley, and I'm at nine West Main Street. I simply go back to the principle of the thing, that these people, the Drains, bought that property in good faith so many years ago, and simply never chose to do anything with it, and then, lo and behold, there appears to be some discrepancy with the maps, and through no fault of anyone's, it appears as though it simply is an error. That is not a change of zoning, it simply is an error. It was never changed, so therefore, it is still commercial, and the fact that it's very, how come, I was surprised to hear that Red Mill is commercial. On what grounds was that built commercial? Is it because of the stores that are adjacent to their post office and what have you, the restaurant? I mean, that's, but I still would like to know why.
I can't speak to a project that was developed while I wasn't a member of the board, but there are a number of ways for those types of developments to be put into a commercial or other zone.
And considering the size of a parcel and what would be allowed, I wonder what, I think it might have been alluded to, what the square footage of an appropriate parcel zoned commercial would have been when they bought it. Obviously, it was less than now, and so therefore, would it be grandfathered as to what could go on there? And it was mentioned trucks and what have you, and I, I'm kind of in a busy area myself, so I'm interested in noise, but certainly a no-truck sign could be put there. I mean, that's kind of a given, isn't it?
Yeah, that's certainly something that could be reviewed. I think that, I mean, if somebody's taking an eighteen-wheeler down a small one-way street, I'm not sure a sign's really gonna stop them.
Nope, maybe the police...
But you never know. That is certainly a step that could be taken. As far as what can go here, I think that, I mean, for the purposes of this, there's not, as the applicant has said, they don't have anything lined up, so we can all feel free to speculate to our minds' content, but I think there's a limit to what we can kind of prescribe in that respect. I think whatever would go there, whether residential, commercial, or anything, the location presents a challenge, and we've discussed it in a couple of different ways.
And apparently, as you said, a resident or a commercial would demand a variance, and if that's what it is, so...
Pretty much anything on this space is probably going to require a variance, given the size of the lot and the requirements that, it's gonna be an existing non-conforming lot, like probably about twenty percent of Norton is a conservative estimate, so keeps the zoning board of appeals busy.
And regarding access to that lot, it seems to me, off of Newland Street would be the better of all possibilities, that's for sure. And I wanna make a comment, you do a very good job, congratulations.
Thank you very much. I will try and let that go to my head.
That's it.
Okay. I don't see any other virtual hands being raised here. Is there any other members of the public who would like to make a comment at this point? I will be a bit of a preacher and say, speak now, forever hold your peace. Mr. Riley, I think you've kind of said that you would like to take a step back and confer with town staff and council a little bit, and not have us make a final vote of recommendation at this time?
Yes, so to the chair, that would be our request here, is that our position is a scrivener's error, the way it was presented on the warrant, you know, was actually a change, I think that was the recommended wording, but we'll defer to council and work with Paul on if any change in the wording needs to be made. But what we would request of the, of the planning board is that you search your records to see if you find anything different than we did, that it was properly changed, notified, noticed, and everything else. We'd be very happy to come back and hear whatever you find. We don't put anybody under any pressure to make a decision tonight, we just wanted to try and move to the next step.
But that would be a not-so-subtle, prove it to us, essentially?
Work to me.
I understand the implication.
Yes.
And before I go to the board to look for this to be continued, you see Orin with your hand raised, again, just speaking for yourself as a member of the public.
That's correct. Just from what Mr. Riley said, is he prepared to make what he's found available to either the board or the public, so we can review it?
Through the chair, absolutely. That presentation is, we're very willing to send that to you so you can study those maps. All the maps are available in Paul's office, that's where I got copies of them, but to facilitate the conversation, we'd be very happy to make that presentation available to anybody who needs it.
Sure. Mr. Riley, you can send that to Paul, that can be coordinated and available for members of the public to review.
Absolutely.
I don't envy the paper cuts that you must have gotten looking through all of that data. Okay. So at the applicant's request, I would look for a motion to continue a recommendation on this zoning article to our April sixth meeting as well.
I'll continue this to the sixth. Orin did bring up a valid point on what the taxes were for this all this time, so that's something I'd be interested in finding out.
That is something that we can review at a later point, and I don't think it's, it's not cogent to the zoning article itself, that's something for the owners to work out with the town, I think.
Chair, through the chair, if I may, I could answer that immediately. We have a single rate in town, so we pay the same rate, no matter if it's commercial or residential.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So Steve, I assume your motion still stands to continue this to the April sixth meeting?
This is Scott, I'll second.
Thank you, Scott, for the second. Is there any further discussions from members of the board who are participating at this point in the meeting?
Mr. Chair, just one question that we can research between now and then as well is the parcel thirty-three dash zero-one, is that also owned by the Drains?
No.
Okay. And so if we can find out that owner from the geomap and looking at it, might be Mr. Kamara, Kamara? I don't know if he's a resident of Norton any longer, but...
Mr. Riley has his hand up, so I believe he can...
I could answer that immediately. The owner who originally purchased his daughter is on the call tonight, so she does not live in town.
Okay. And she supports this rezoning as well?
He is.
Thank you.
Okay. So we do have a motion on the floor and a second. Is there any further discussion from members of the board who are participating at this time? Okay, hearing none. Everybody's all out of the usual order, so stay on your toes here. Kevin?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, and Orin again is abstaining from this point in the meeting, so this recommendation is continued to the April sixth meeting for further discussion. The last zoning article for us to discuss is a proposal to amend the Norton zoning bylaw two dot two, which is definitions for the marijuana establishment definition. Paul, I'm not sure if we have anybody specifically ready to present what we're looking to do with this article, or they've gone to bed by now.
Nope, Renee apparently never sleeps, but Renee is on.
I am on.
There you are.
Hello, everyone.
Okay, go ahead, Renee, I'm not sure if you have members of your committee on where you need to call a roll, but I will let you take the floor regardless.
Thank you, I do not, it is just me. So I know, Paul, I'm not sure what version that they have from the warrant article.
They have the original draft, that's all I had received until you emailed me tonight.
Okay. So I'll just give you a quick update. I received a couple days ago from town council some answers to some questions that I had on the warrant, so I do have it in final form, I sent it to Paul, but I did it shortly after your meeting began, so I'll just give a summary of what's there. There are three primary changes that we're looking at for the article, and this is posted town meeting that we had in October when we approved the last set of changes. So the first is, under definitions in section one-seventy-five, two dot two, to delete the current marijuana establishment definition and replace it with a new definition. The current definition's been modified, and it is part of the MGL, so we're going to delete that, and we're actually replacing that with a... to delete that, and we're actually replacing that with a definition that appears on the Cannabis Control Commission, um, with some additional text in the beginning. Uh, can I show my screen?
You should have that ability.
Okay, let me just do that, that might help a little bit here. Then I can, um, just walk you through, okay? Can everyone see it?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so it shows the, uh, the deletion of the previous, uh, definition and then the addition of the definition from the CCC, uh, with just a bit of additional information here, um, to note, type of license, marijuana related businesses defined in MGL, chapter 94G, section 1, and the Cannabis Control Commission Regulations 93 CMR 500, including but not limited to, and then from that point, um, a marijuana cultivator, that is a, a direct copy paste from the CCC. Um, so that's one of the changes. Orin, I know that you asked a question about removing, um, the outdoor because it's not something that we allow, but since, uh, we did, um, refer to this as being defined within the CCC, we kept the language the same.
Okay.
Um, the second change on here is something that, um, due to, I guess the first change is similar to this as well, after we had approved, um, the marijuana bylaw, the Cannabis Control Commission changed their regulations, um, and approved delivery licenses and couriers. Um, part of that, it, it literally happened about a, a month, um, after we had reviewed and approved the bylaw, um, but if you remember, we initially were supposed to propose this bylaw in the, in our town meeting, I believe it was in May, but we postponed it because of the pandemic. Um, so the next section here, it literally, um, just within definitions within the bylaw itself, the marijuana bylaw itself, we just added in these new definitions that, um, we'll be referencing, you know, throughout the process in the HDA or other engagements with , uh, different applicants. So we have the delivery license, delivery licensee, marijuana courier, marijuana delivery operator or delivery operator, micro business, and then a warehouse. These are just new terms that are within the, uh, the new regulations.
And to confirm, those are all directly from the state-level Cannabis Control Commission documentation?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the last change, um, is under the use regulations, this was, uh, literally an oversight from us when we, um, first wrote this. So additionally, um, when we wrote this, we, we understood what the process was from the licensing from the CCC, so the, um, the applicants have to go through, um, the, the submission process, they are awarded a provisional license, and then they can start to, um, to get their special permit by site approval, whatever, um, permits they may need for the town. And then, um, upon building or changes, the CCC has to come out and actually do an inspection of their buildings, and then they're awarded, um, if they meet all the requirements, the final license. Unfortunately, what we, what we did is, is when we wrote this, um, we wrote it as if they would have their final license before they would apply for the building permit, so, um, it was, it's literally something that they cannot do.
Awesome.
Is our question?
So you're saying they can't have, you're saying they can't have a building that's inspected and have a building, and that, to get a building permit?
Exactly.
That does seem to, uh, yes.
Yeah, we're, we're not quite sure how, how we missed that one, or, um, it probably came from another, another, uh, bylaw that we referenced, but, um, so what we did is we added in a section just to show, um, a new section for showing that no marijuana establishment or MTC may apply for a building permit prior to its receipt of special permit and site plan approval. Um, and then below, we, we took out the, uh, just the section, um, in item number five, um, referencing applying for a building permit, um, because that's a show there, the final license that's attached to. And then the next one is just a change because we added in some bullets.
Okay. And then the section below that?
The section below, this is, um, just a, an old, um, bylaw that is in there, and this is just housekeeping cleanup to completely delete the, uh, the 4 dot 9, the temporary moratorium on recreational marijuana establishments, and you'll see it has the date showing 2016 and 2018 in that.
Okay. Um, are there any other changes that are being, uh, proposed to the existing bylaw? Or is it, is it strictly the adding definitions and clarifying, um, that oversight and to, I guess, restate for the members of the public that are on the call, there's being no changes whatsoever to what uses are allowed where or what types of businesses are allowed, um, in town?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, if you don't have anything else, I think I would go to members of the board to, um, in case they have any additional questions for you, um, regarding these three change, three, well, I'll call it four changes with the deletion. Uh. Orin, I see your hand up, so if you wanna?
I, I just wanna thank Renee for her group, for the work of her group, um, this would have been helpful. And just curious, has, has the town been successful in, in securing anybody, any, of this bylaw?
Um, so we have, uh, two HCAs, um, one of the applicants, Solar Retail Norton, is, is ready to come to you guys, but because it's a bylaw, they can't, um, they can't file yet to get the, the site plan approval or the special permit.
Agreed.
So they're, they're ready to go, they're just waiting for us to, to make the change. Um, and then the other one is, is also for a retailer, um, we had, uh, we, we did an amendment to the HCA just due to a change in ownership, um, and they're working with, uh, um, the folks at their site to, to bring that to fruition. Um, additionally, we have, um, we are looking at two, um, host community agreements. Um, one is, is for a, a delivery operator, um, it's actually one of the retailer, retailers that we looked at, but we did not decide to recommend to the board, um, so they're back with us and, and we're doing the, it's already been recommended from the EDC and, and, um, we're going through the HCA negotiation now, prior to presenting it to the sweatboard for approval. And then, um, we have one that's actually being presented to the EDC tomorrow for a cultivation, manufacturing, and, um, delivery operator license as well.
Okay.
Chair, uh, Chair, can I ask, Renee, Renee, can you clarify, you said that the first HCA cannot apply for the site plan and special permit because of this provision? Do you mean the building permit or?
Um.
Because I was understanding that they can apply for the site plan and special permit now that they have their, uh, uh, preliminary approval.
Well, I, I think, Paul, because what we listed here, it, it had the receipt of all required permits and approvals prior to its final license, or, or upon receiving its final license, so that's why we changed the language to say that they can apply for a building permit, um, prior, oh, it does say prior to the receipt of special plan, yeah, I think that, it's, what time is it? Nine, nine fifty-three has got me a little loopy.
Yeah, so I think they can apply for the special permanent site plan, but they can't apply for a building permit.
Correct.
Who's corrected?
Yeah, I'm sorry, for the confusion there.
Understood. Uh, are there any further questions from members of the board at this time for Renee? Okay. Um, hearing none, I will open it up to members of the public who may be listening on the call. Uh, the number of people has significantly dropped off since the earlier sessions for some reason, I'm not sure why. Uh, but we just still have 27 people on the line here, so if any would like to make a question or a comment about these changes to the town's existing marijuana bylaw, please feel free. So I scroll through and look for physical hands, I do not see any. Uh, hearing none, I would look for, um, action from the board related to this, um, to this in terms of, uh, whether or not we would, Renee, this is one that you would be presenting at town meeting, correct?
I would, yeah.
Okay, so this would be for, uh, the planning board's recommendation regarding this article at town meeting.
We would motion to endorse. So, so moved.
Thank you, Steve.
Just a, a technical question, do we need a, Renee, you, you, uh, I think said that you had sent the final draft over to Paul tonight, should we not have the final draft before we? And I, I wasn't quite sure, I was trying to follow along with you in terms of what you were saying versus what we have, uh, originally, um.
So the, um, what you have originally is, uh, the first section, there's a question on whether or not we're gonna modify the existing definition or, um, do a delete and replace, and so that, that was the delete and replace with the additional language that I read, um.
Yeah. So Joe, in the document that we have, in the numbered list at the very top of the document, um, that's where it's the either-or option, and town council told Renee to go with the or option, so that's what's reflected.
So the only thing that's, that is different is the under definitions. Correct?
Yeah, under Article 2 definition, um, that's been updated, and then, do you have a copy, does it show, um, if you scroll down to, it's like page 2 or 3, do you see blue font?
We do not. We just have the PDF with, um, black and white. But I, you showed, you showed it on the screen when you were presenting, um. So I'm, um, we do have a motion on the floor. Second motion.
If we close the public hearing first or no?
Yes, we probably should do that. Thank you, thank you, Scott, for correcting my brush-to-judgment there.
I'll withdraw my motion so we can close the public hearing, and, uh, motion to close the public hearing. Just Scott, I'll second.
Thank you, Steve, for the motion, and Scott, for the second. Um, is there any further discussion from members of the board? Joe, are you comfortable moving forward?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so any further discussion from members of the board? Hearing none, I will move to vote on the motion to close the public hearing, and to start with Joe.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Orin? You're muted, Orin, so if you could unmute, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Scott?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So the public hearing on the adjustments to the marijuana bylaw definitions is closed, um, and I would now look for a motion on the, to endorse and recommend the article as discussed.
I'm going to move.
Thank you, Steve, for the motion.
This is Scott, I'll second.
Thank you, Scott, for the second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. So, the board is unanimously recommending this article, and, uh, I will, we will be there to testify therefore at town meeting.
Excellent. Thank you guys so much, I appreciate your time and your continued support.
Thank you, Renee.
Thank you, Renee.
Good night.
Okay, we are almost to the end here. Uh, the final item on our agenda is a continued public hearing, I'm not going to count the number of continuances, but for Zero Ridge Eddie Street, um, Paul, I have here that they're requesting a continuance to the 6th.
I move to continue to the 6th.
Second.
Thank you, Steve, for the motion, and Julie for the second. Is there any further discussion from members of the board? Paul, I have one, are they actually going to present on the 6th?
I think it's highly unlikely, because I think they're not even going back to Concom until after.
Understood.
And, um, you read the peer review from the, on Stormwater, it's pretty significant.
Okay.
And, and I wanna be, you know, again, remind you that I did let the applicant know about the election coming up, and that if they don't have a decision by April 6th, that they have a few options, and one of which would be to withdraw.
Yeah.
Submit after the new board, or take their chance with five voting members.
Yeah, as, as, as long as they have been, uh, they understand their options, that's all we can do.
And they, I think.
That's fine. So, uh, I have no further discussion points, so I'm gonna stop holding everybody up here. Um, seeing no further discussion, I will go to the members for a vote. Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that Zero Registry continues to April 6th. Uh, before we motion to adjourn, I just wanted to say, uh, again, if, um, we do have two positions on the board which will be, uh, vacant after the election, um, so if people are interested in joining the board, whether they're watching this at the comfort of their homes, or if any of us want to spread the word in whatever mess, manners we feel are appropriate, uh, anybody interested can reach out to the town planner to, uh, kind of do a, write in campaigns to those who choose and/or, um, communicate.
To the town manager.
To the town manager, did I, what did I say, town meeting?
I, I think to me, you said, anyway.
Uh, and to the town manager, yes. Um, so, I know we did have one person who reached out to, uh, to Mike already, which is encouraging, um, but I wanna, I think we have, this meeting aside, we have lots of fun times here, so let's get a, get some, get some pe- people in here who, uh, are interested in participating in town government.
Paul.
So I'm gonna stop.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, are we, are we on for meeting with the select board? I think you gave us like the date, I think it was the 15th? Should we all?
That's, uh, Mike, Mike still has to confirm it, but Mike is, um, certainly very aware of this issue, and, uh, so I'm, I'll, I'll confirm it with him.
Okay, and then Nicole will send us out like a, you know, meeting notice?
I'm sure once it's official that we will, uh, yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, like, if we think that's gonna be that date, that I'm holding it? Or my calendar gets crazy, just to be blunt.
Understood, thank you, Julie.
Yeah, um, I'll try to get a confirmation with him, but I, he was pretty certain it was going to be that.
Yeah.
I just don't wanna miss out, you know?
No, we, we want everybody there.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, once anybody has anything else further they would add to the meeting, Paul, I see your hand up in the air, so go right ahead quickly.
Uh, just a reminder, and I'll send out an email again tomorrow, but, uh, next Wednesday is our next virtual, um, master plan meeting, that'll focus on mobility, uh, water and sewer and other town services, so, uh, I'd love everybody to participate. Uh, it'll be virtual, and like last time too, they'll, they're, uh, the website, master plan website, will go live tomorrow with online surveys and mapping exercises as well, so.
If you share, if you share those out online, I will be sure to amplify them as minimal effort and as minimal reach as I have, but, uh.
We are, we are, uh, we'll be getting that out, hopefully, we're supposed to be getting it out tomorrow, and we'll be blasting it out through other, uh, social media and emails, so.
Great. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
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 Julie with the motion, Orin with the second, invite those. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Joe?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yeah.
Julie?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Orin?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Thank you very much for your time, everybody, we had a lot to get through, I think we got through it pretty well.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Have a great evening.
You too, thank you.
Bye, guys.
Night.